Okay, so we are on Zoom. And we are, you know, Allen's working, so we can call the September meeting. I mean, our first for Coxville Commission to order. Tonight, first, it's like 12:00, everyone back from our month's highest. It seems like it's been a long time. And then we're ready for our fall sprint. We should let the minutes show that for Plan Five, Planning Commissioners are in attendance. Heidi, Boys, and Aaron Graves asked to be excused. And we have with us this evening, and we'll let you introduce yourself in a minute. Are you walking in Brian Kinslow? Who, as per the rules, picket signs or notices that set up Planning Commissions being... Well, doesn't think you're sitting under the Planning Commission today. Just delighted for one of our two colleagues who is here.
Right.
So if it's time to vote, we can do the crap. Also, I'd like to note, I don't see anyone in this room in the Zoom minutes. We have two folks in the audience, Councilmember Godini and Councilmember Iraq. We really appreciate your being here because there are agenda items that you all are helping to store for Council. We're interested in hearing from you about those items. And so thank you for coming this evening. So with that, and then on our, on our agenda tonight, so everyone knows, we have one zoning change to review, proposed revisions to the sign code. And then we will have the second item on our agenda is a discussion of long-range planning priorities and projects. You'll recall, we've talked about this several times this year. We finally submitted our recommendations to Council, and Council responded with its prioritization and what we suggested as a work plan. So it is our task to dig in a little more and see what next steps there might be for any of those tasks. And that's why it's valuable to the Council members to be here to help shape that discussion. So that's what that topic will be. So we'll start with Chair's update. The only update I have is that Council has appointed Brian Kinslow as alternate. And I will ask if you would like to introduce yourself.
I'm Brian Kinslow, I've been at Narbrith since 2020. I have three kids, one of which started in first grade today at Marion Elementary.
Sure, I started my grandchild.
It might be the same, but. So they have me running around. I'm starting to coach the soccer team here in Narbrith for the first graders as well. And my wife's coach is Tivo, so pretty involved in the community and happy to be here.
Which block do you live in?
I live on Grove Place, so right behind Marion Elementary. Small old street.
I call it our leave at the university.
Yeah, it's wonderful.
The TV show, which I can compare with a little story.
Emily Parkin's will have a lot of people over there. Is that where that's, that's where you live?
It's very little corner of the town.
Yeah.
And what interested you in the upper commission?
I met with Mike, I'm friendly with Aaron. I wanted to get involved in the community and make sure this was a place that was serving, you know, my family and, you know, I wanted to be a part of the community.
Great.
Yeah.
All right, well, as you know, no doubt, because you're active in sports, that that's what, that's what we, that we need here to make our town lovely and successful. There's people like you moving in and jumping right in and helping move all of our sports and community institutions along. So we welcome you and look forward to having you. And I hope you'll find this a great place to advance your host position as well.
Thanks.
I don't have any other updates, but I would like to ask, if I'm not hitting the spot, my Councilmember Godini, could you update us on the Parks Planning Process? And on what you anticipate the Planning Commission's role will be this fall in that process?
Yes, I could definitely do that. So, and Jean can also jump in as the, or other, she's also on the Parks Planning Study Committee as well. So the Parks Plan Study Committee has been working long overseeing the consultants' initial engagement work to determine different site layout concepts for which areas of three different, I'm going to call them park spaces, there are technically only two that are actually, you can think of as a park space. The third one is, as we know, Town Square, Station Circle area. So they've been designing initial concepts and we have a kind of two-phase public engagement process. The first one is a high-level visioning survey. A lot of y'all have probably been taking it. If you haven't, then I would suggest take it really quickly because it's going to be closing up in a couple of days. You remember if it was the seventh or the ninth?
I think it was the ninth.
Yeah, it will be closing up in a couple of days. So we've got a pretty robust responses so far. Last time I checked, it was over 500 responses. And we did a lot of work to try to raise awareness of that. Throughout the process, we were checking back in and seeing which populations might have been underrepresented in the survey. We were doing kind of flyer drops in certain areas. We were out at the farmer's market and just trying to meet people out in the world to try to boost the response rate. So we got a pretty robust response there. And there were lots of open answer parts of the questions, so we analyzed those as well. Both to say, you know, yes, what button did you press on the thing that calculates your response? But also, what were the values that you were articulating when you were given a chance to actually state to us what sorts of things were important for you in the planning processes? Again, that's Town Square, Station Circle, Narbrith Park. And the third one is the newly acquired Elm Grove Park, which is over on the south side off of Wimberton. The fourth one, we've gotten a lot of questions about why Sabon Park wasn't included. I think this body may have been updated on why that was, but just to remind you, or if you didn't know, we, this Parks Planning Process is funded through partnership with the state and the federal government. The funding was federal. And as a result of that, there were specific timelines that the process has to hit. Because there are various unknowns regarding the broader Sabon property, the recommendation from the state to us was, do not include that in this planning process. You can have, you can come back and request funds for a separate planning process once you have more certainty regarding that piece of property. So we accepted the state's recommendation, and that's why the three spaces were identified rather than all four of our, again, park spaces plus. The, I mentioned the two tracks of our community engagement process. The one was the overall engagement. The second one was for various different stakeholder groups, for more of a drill down on some specific concepts. And there are way too many groups to mention, but basically, any active community group in Narbrith, we have tried to include in some way, shape, or form. That also includes, obviously, there are technical staff, Montgomery County Planning Commission was included in that. And some entities that we thought could help provide a spotlight on individuals living with disabilities. So we tried to have it be as diverse of a feedback venue as possible. In addition to that, there were three kind of, those stakeholder, I'm calling them stakeholder groups. The parlance of what they are, they were key person interviews, but they were actual groups, so they're not necessarily individuals. And then we had three kind of larger meetings that were stakeholder groups that were various different entities that had some sort of commonality to them. So one were the institutional parks users. So obviously, we know we've got baseball as a, you know, regular offering here. Football, various other institutional parks users, Narbrith Athletic Association. They had kind of their own session to speak directly with the consultants. We had, and while this group isn't a group per se, we had one specifically for young parents with children in the school system. We felt that that was a population that might be very, very busy and might not otherwise have a higher level of group engagement in the process because they have young children. So we wanted to give special attention to that group. And then one, we allocated the third one specifically for Town Square, Station Circle because it was so different from the other Parks Planning Processes. So we've gotten a lot of feedback and information from those various different venues of the process. And we're trying, the study committee is at the point where we're trying to digest and consolidate all of that information and translate that information into feedback to the consultants to start refining vision for those three spaces. At, before, so then, and then that will start moving forward. Once that gets refined a bit, and I don't remember which, is it November that we're hoping that the consultant can come to Planning Commission?
It's November 4th.
At your November regular meeting. And hopefully, a lot of that variety of information has been distilled into a more digestible chunk so that y'all can then put your expertise to bear in terms of providing feedback at that meeting that can come back with and help refine that process. Eventually, it will be landing on Council's desk after it's been through those various different feedback loops. And we are hoping that Council will be on track to vote on a final plan early next year. So are there other things?
So it's being presented to Council in December, and then the vote will happen in January?
There's a lot of information I just threw at you. We're happy to answer questions as well.
Right. I have a few, but I'll ask any of my colleagues, do you have any questions?
Well, I have one. The likelihood is that the desired plan will far exceed the available funds for realization of same. Is there a process in mind for reconciling the hopes and dreams with the available fund?
Yes, that's a great question because that's been something that's been on our minds, especially recently as we can get into the nuts and bolts of the visioning. I believe that the thinking is, and Jean, you can correct me if I'm wrong or fill in any gaps. The thinking is that we're trying to keep globally everything within a space that we could reasonably deliver on the vision over a defined period of time. And then from there, also break it up into different levels of phases. What sorts of things could be implemented almost immediately to demonstrate progress? Versus what sorts of things might be more midterm? And then in addition, having actual more aspirational elements in there as well to really demonstrate the overall vision of the process. But making sure that we have both those short-term deliverables that we are pretty sure we can deliver on immediately to demonstrate progress while working towards the midterm things, and then maybe planning for bigger ticket items that we might have to pursue some sort of grant funding for. But reflect, you know, the aspirational visions that we've received through a lot of feedback.
And just to add to that, right now, I think we're in, we have collected all of the aspirational ideas that have come from the community and various organizations. But now we're at that stage where we have to kind of narrow it down to what's feasible and also kind of start looking at costs and what, what we can actually implement. So it's, it's going to be a process to narrow it down.
Yes, and I will say that, in addition, one of the things that jumped out to me in terms of the feedback that we received from the visioning survey was that a lot of the items actually weren't what I would consider to be like high-dollar items in terms of the feedback. A lot of it was about usability of the space on a throughout-the-day type of basis. And some of, and, you know, the ability for certain like restroom facilities to be open on a, on a regular basis. So some of those things, even though it is, you know, when you, when you kind of see the plan, it's a very high-level one. And, you know, all of the various different plans look like they've got a lot of kind of building in this whole. We're also trying to be really attentive to the feedback we're receiving. What are some of the things that would also just help you use the space more regularly in the way that you want to?
Any other questions?
Not for me.
Anyone else have any questions?
So plans that would come out of the visioning question, have they already been produced and are they available for?
Yes, good question. So there were initial concepts that were produced, and they were produced in a way to show contrast between different ideas. So what you'll see, and if we have the, they're online, there's a, there is a...
The URL is, yeah.
There's a webpage where like all of the information lives.
There's a lot of, right?
Our work Parks Plan is, it's going to be, where's this URL?
It's narbrithpa.gov informed slash project information slash master park plan, if I can remember.
Yeah. The way I usually find it is Googling Narbrith Master Park Plan. It tends to show up as the first one.
What is the AI assistant answer to that? It's not too hard to navigate, too rough. Okay, old-fashioned way, I don't know, but it's better. There's anchored you all with that. There's a tremendous amount of information there, presentations, records of meetings. So that actually was one of my questions first, and I thank you both for coming to discuss this. And I'd like to thank you both for asking your consulting team to come to the Planning Commission. We appreciate that very much. My, my question was, how do we, how do we prepare for this? I guess there'll be a presentation, and then we'll be asked to give feedback. I don't think we give formal recommendations, do we? We just sort of informally give our feedback, or what is expected of the commission?
That's a good question.
That's a good question. I mean...
I think Simone Collins can probably guide that process a little bit better and give clearer answers. But my take is that you guys would provide your recommendations, and then Council would consider those at the next meeting when we reviewed the plan.
Yeah, so certainly you can additionally provide ideas directly to Simone Collins. But if you want to produce kind of a written consensus document and forward it to us, I think that, I think that would be helpful.
Okay.
Not to put you on the spot, I don't want to, you know, put a ton of additional work on your plate if you're, but, you know, if you, if that is something that the commission would be interested in, I think that would be welcome.
Oh, we do appreciate being consulted, so that's what he's here for. He wants to make his community better. And then in terms of preparing our desk, it just means we should all kind of take some time and look at the information on the webpage. And will there be at the point that a consultant comes to us, any kind of draft of the plan or?
So right now, it's at a very preliminary concept stage. And then there will be a public engagement session by October, October 8. And they will have a further along, is it refined concept at that stage?
I think it is.
Yeah, so that will be further along. And then by the time you guys see it in November, it will be the traffic planning. So there's several stages before, before you will see it.
You're welcome to attend the October public meeting as well. The information for that's online. And we will be available on First Friday.
Right, we'll be at Station Square for First Friday. And it's really just an informal opportunity to engage with the community, answer questions. And people will be able to look at the initial concepts that have been presented by Simone Collins and get people to come, show up to the public engagement session in October.
Yeah, and that will just be members of the Study Committee. That First Friday informal event will just be members of the Study Committee, won't involve Simone Collins.
I think that would be this Friday, wouldn't it?
Come talk to us, get a drink. You can get a drink and then come talk to us, whichever order you want to do it in.
Those of us getting the answers will have had several drinks.
Maybe I had one before I went after. And I, Michael, I think you were the Planning Commission's liaison. Do we have a liaison to this committee now, anyone? Or is it you?
I believe it's still me.
All right, and then I guess, I guess that's, those are my other questions. So if there are no other questions from anyone else, again, our thanks for spending the time talking to us about it, for inviting us to come in on it. And I remember Tina told me, who I live with, that she's now on the Study Committee. So she said, you want to go to Station Circle Friday? You might see me there. So thank you. So let's then move on to approval of our July minutes, which we forwarded over the weekend to you all. Hopefully, you'll have a chance to look at them. And I wonder if anyone would like to make a motion about approving minutes. Off, motions to approve the minutes, is there a second? Jim, a second? Does anyone have any questions, comments, corrections, or anything they'd like to raise about the minutes that we're submitting?
I need to check if I'm looking at the right thing here. This is May meeting. I'm confused about the timing.
We always just like copy it from our documents or whatever.
Yes, well, this would be an opportunity to correct us. Because it says May meeting, Monday, July 1st. I think history will not be kind to us. Am I looking at the right document?
Remember, a lot of Narbrith is the land.
I know, I know, I'm fully aware of, fully aware of that.
Then correct it.
Okay, so we'll correct the dates. I get it off in the agendas too, just carry them along with my presentation. Are there any comments, other comments or? Okay, so the motion is to approve the minutes as submitted with the correction of the date. All in favor? Any comments? Okay, thanks, Jennifer. Again, for doing that. They are approved, and would you make a PDF and send them off to Allen? He will, he will post it to us. Okay, so our next item of business is the, is they proposed a zoning revision that has been advertised by Council. This is a zoning revision that pertains to section 500 of the code, 500 of the code, meaning suns. For the background, you'll recall, the developer of 650 Montgomery Avenue came to Commissioner Lloyd this year, I think in January, implied for us some issues with the sign code, the sign code that he anticipated that he would encounter when he began to lease up his building. And we discussed those issues with him. I think Kevin Walsh was involved, and we, we agreed in concept that his concerns were valid at the time. And it would be important for us to address them by reconsidering aspects of the code when the time came, we would do that. And so I think it was in July, Adam approached the Borough to ask formally for some amendments to the code. I can't remember exactly the, I think he and Kevin Walsh and I and Matt West met on site, discussed things. And then we brought some recommendations to the commission, to the Planning Commission, I believe, planning, and we assigned a couple of our members to work with, with the signing officer, the staff, and the solicitor to develop the code. I think we were involved with that, Jim? Aaron Graves was involved with that. Was there anything you'd like to say about that to report?
It was, we had a great time.
You had that? But, seriously.
And hopefully, everything, I, I would love to be looking at a track changes document here so I could see what the changes were.
I'm sorry, I didn't bring my mom.
So take it on faith that they're in here.
It was a little back and forth.
Yeah.
After you guys came up with something, I reviewed it. Adam reviewed it, Adam had some patterns to develop, he had some questions. But Kevin and I wrote back through the Borough Office that the, our repetition code was that Adam would be able to put up the signs that he was interested in putting up. But I think what's important to flag is, in the process of looking at the code, you all identified some other issues in the code that needed to be fixed in terms of ant signs and wall signs. And so basically, this represents a slightly broader clarification of some parts of the sign code that were problematic and also happened to support what Adam needed to get. The issues were, we had, the global issues where we had two kinds of signs, ant signs and wall signs, which, which were not, what wall signs were not fully articulated in the code. And the distinction between wall signs and ant signs didn't seem to be clear or productive.
It was murky.
So what you all did is you just consolidated that into one kind of sign. The issues that Adam faces, if the sign code is written with the assumption that most buildings have one side that fronts a street. And in some buildings, corner buildings have two sides that front streets. And the code was written to accommodate that. And the building at 650 Montgomery is a little tricky. There's one side that fronts Montgomery, which is technically the front of the building. It has a side that fronts Meeting House, which is the side of the building for the purposes of it being a corner building in the zoning code. And then it has another side that faces parking lot, which is in reality where a lot of people are willing to enter the building. And our sign code really didn't have provisions for what to do there. And so what we did is, is tried to craft, adjust the code so that it would accommodate a building of that, of that situation. The question came up, should we be thinking about 230 Havreford as well and what its signage needs were? But the owner, the developer of that site hasn't really communicated to us about any signage needs yet. So we thought, we're not be, we're trying to guess. And I think when there were issues that the developer faced, we could then open the question up again. So this is really what was prompted by the, by the request of the Park Bureau to reconsider the code. There really was a gap in the code because of this quirky situation and some ambiguities in the code. And I think that's what the group saw.
In fairness, it was the first time that signage had come up since we wrote this code a couple of years ago. Never been tested, probably was, at the time, was not deemed to be of earth-shattering importance, signage. And this is what happens when you write a new code. There's areas that are soft and don't get tested. And there's, there aren't enough hours in a day to test everything. So this was, this was an example of something that had lots of, lots of cracks for things to fall through, and they did.
I'm re-encoding, I realized there was one other ambiguity that we had to deal with, which was, the code not only is written with the assumption that most buildings would only have one side at front that faced the street, but also that most buildings would only have one business. And that sort of rules about how a building that had multiple businesses in it, like Adam's is going to have, are also murky. In some places, they were clear, in other places, they weren't, and they conflicted. And so that, that also was straightened out in this revision. So it's clear if you have a building with more than one business, what, what's the relationship with the number of some kinds of signs to your building? What's the number of, what's the relationship with the number of signs to the number of businesses you have? And so forth. So it's just all, a lot of cleanup like that. So in essence, what this, at least at 650, allows for is Adam to have one side on each side of this building for businesses that face Montgomery, excuse me, that face Meeting House and that face the parking lot. There could be one side for each business facing in each direction, and an additional sign for the corner tenant that faces Montgomery Avenue. It also allows, we used, we had a marquee sign, like a movie theater sign. It wasn't clear on what facade that could be allowed. It just said, I think, front of the building or the entrance, but it wasn't very clear. So we clarified that he could have a marquee. He wants the marquee to be on the, what would, I guess, be considered the rear of the building, but it's the side that faces the water entry off of Meeting House. And that will be the, that is the main entrance to the building. That is the main entrance to the upper levels that will be residential. And so that's where he wanted the marquee. So we clarified that the marquee could go over the main entrance of the building. So I think those are the more plain English outcomes of this. Yep?
Are blade signs or banner signs covered?
They are currently covered in the code. There are no changes to those kinds of signs in this amendment.
So is that you can have either a projecting sign or a band wall sign?
Well, a blade sign projects out, right? What was the other kind of sign you mentioned?
Well, the wall sign is the, what we're discussing here, right?
A wall sign is not flat to a wall, and a blade sign projects out. You mentioned a banner was the other one you used.
It says it's a version of the blade sign, but.
I don't think they're actually in the code, banners. But you can have a blade sign and you can have a wall sign.
Probably wood on this building.
But you could have both for the same business?
I'm pretty sure. And that is probably, I mean, that is the way the code is, and now we're going to propose a change. We also have an awning sign, too.
In addition to the wall sign?
Yep.
So in a few months, we'll find out whether we have given rise to complete chaos.
So far, it hasn't seen.
Entirely possible. I hope not.
So far, it hasn't seemed to be a problem. By consolidating the wall signs and the band signs, we actually did potentially reduce the number of signs. Because in the past, you had the band sign and a wall sign on the same wall.
Now you can have an awning, a marquee, a wall sign, and a blade.
You could also, there's other things too. It always happens, but now it's the having a wall sign and a wall sign. You have to have, you have the wall sign.
It's not too late to have a stab at the money.
Well, it's already been advertised, so.
Yeah, that's true.
So it would delay the process. So, but I feel like this has been the planning commission's to really work on, right? It's really right now, the question is, does the, I'm going to reflect the intent of the commissions to make a little bit of a, and if there's other things that we feel like we'd like to address, that those could be, this could be taken out outside of the recommendation about this ordinance. We could recommend to council, for example, that we would recommend their adoption is, however, that we feel there's other issues that require further consideration.
It's a whole lot. It was.
Yeah, I think it should be noted, too, that this effort was done kind of very quickly because the developer was at a point where they had to start ordering signs and things like that. So it wasn't something that we got a lot of time to bat around, so I appreciate you jumping on it so quickly. But it is a bit of an experiment, and I don't have a point to add.
And no, no ordinance like this is ever going to be perfect. Because the next thing we're going to find is we're going to have a triangular building on a curved street, on a curved one-way street. What the heck are we going to do then? So unfortunately, we have a developer in this instance who is conscientious guy, and I am confident that we'll see people in this city.
Did they have a question? So do you want to report on that, to see if you see, if you make any comments that you'd like to create?
Oh, we found this line is, we prepared it so we're very, what was it?
You know, if different person in the office needed it, I don't know, it's the same person.
What are you saying is we're all going to do that together?
If it would be, if it would be possible for future submissions by developers to, to, powers that be, that they include sign here, sign here, sign, in other words, the intent of where signage would go prior to, you know, getting to the point where it's like, okay, now you're doing it without a lot of time to think it over, that would be useful. We're usually looking at architectural elevations, but we're not looking at things like where the sign is. So it'd be useful to have that be part of this submission.
What about?
Part of that, those guaranteed tenants. So even if they presented something that they were, in the normal lay-up developer process, the tenants might ask for something there, so you have to understand that. And I do, secondly, I think before you joined the mission, Adam did come here and explain the situation and the nature of the signs he would put out. I don't think he actually showed us the drawings. I don't think he had his packages yet.
No, but he had generic signs on the other side. They were generic signs.
So he did, he did, so thank you for, I think he did try to, as Jim said, he's been pretty conscious, he's been conscious, conscientious in his own process, and did try to alert us many months ahead of time.
Just, what, yeah. I know we've discussed this, but actually I missed the last meeting anyway, so the, if you have a plate glass window, you can decorate that how we want, right? It's not considered a sign?
We have a category search for window destinations. These are a matter of great terms. How much of the window could be covered by a sign? So we do have a section that maybe the, so you can't do it every one, but my heart belongs to this sign, so it'll be down about 25% of the total area. You know, my rate of going out and visiting the sale, right? Or Keku is your destination, particularly if you're going out. And there are, there are other, other.
I don't know, are we enforcing that, really? But anyway.
Sometimes I get pictures of signs and I think, oh, they're going to be wonderful. If you have concerns about that, that's a, you know, a question. It's better. I kept having, how did you ensure the code, that that sign was there?
Well, I mean, to install, to install signage on the inside of your glass window, I'm not sure most people would pull a permit, right, to do that? So.
But Kevin Walsh rounded this thing some too. I see some others you can, it became super responsive in the sense that you see something you think isn't there, you can send it out, and no answer. I do that a lot. And sometimes I'm very surprised at how many answers, what seems to me to be, you know, not correct is, is your reason for, is interpretation. So that means you think either it's very humble, or maybe we need to fix the code so that the interpretations are different. So I encourage you, if you see something, just send it, just send it out. They'll, they'll explain to you why that sign is permitted, or they'll, they'll investigate. All right. Any other comments or questions? Can I have a motion? What I'd like to do is ask someone to make a motion to recommend approval of this sign. If you'd like to, especially typically noting that there are other issues we want to take up in the future.
No, these are just informational questions.
So just a motion, can I ask someone if they would like to make a motion to recommend to council that we approve the proposed ordinance as advertised? A motion for, well, is there a second? On my favor of that motion?
Hi.
That's great. So we will let council know that we recommend their, that they approve this ordinance. So now let's move on to our second gen title, long range. As you know, Dave was there last year, and certainly this year, we spent time in several meetings trying to frame a series of recommendations to council about the long-range planning projects that we'd like to take on. Part of that was precipitated by the council, the borough entering into a new professional services community coming with, to his team for three more years of service as our, our planning consultants. And so the question is, what are their priorities being? At the time, they have allocated, the active transportation plan, which I think we'll probably talk about in a minute, is one of their tasks, but there is time that they're scheduled to take on other work. And so we thought it'd be useful to ask council from, from the council's point of view, what the priorities are. So we sent to council, I think it was in May, after paring it down, after a few meetings, a series of recommendations, four recommendations. We did this at our May meeting, the letters from May 13th, the topics for downtown retail. We recommended hiring a downtown retail consultant to help with our retail strategies. We, secondly, we have recommended looking at variety of housing, residential zoning issues related to affordable housing, and also to some quirks that still have created a situation where a lot of houses are on, for me, to the safety of statements in particular. And also in that bundle to look at whether or not there are opportunities in the areas in five-day around Havreford, you know, or the blocks beyond for, for housing development that could, that could support affordable housing goals. So that's the second, rather large topic. Third was, looking further at Montgomery Avenue, both in terms of streetscape and urban lanes to edge, but also whether or not there can be inner jurisdictional lanes and traffic and transportation with, with, with intention. And then the fourth topic was to recapify the zoning code, which, which we sent, and trying to sort of rationalize a lot of the codification numbers of where it's in the areas for the outer, trying as hard as possible now, changing the intent of the code, just clarifying things in that organization so that things are easier to find. You don't have to, like, look at three different chapters to find out, you know, adding some one thing for your properties. Those are the topics we presented to council. Council wrote back a long afterwards with its response, forwarded that to you, but the nudge of it is, I'll just read it out loud. "Council calls upon Norbert Planning Commission with support from Montgomery County Planning Commission to examine the recodification of the zoning code, the entry recommend changes to code, support affordable housing, and to make sure that our standards are used and standards for safe plans better reflect the makeup of current housing." "Council further asked the planning commission to reach out to the Lower Marion Planning Commission on the topic of joint Montgomery Avenue planning, and to discuss code changes recommended by the active transportation plan, the potential Montgomery Avenue traffic only in safety can, once they are completed." Earlier in the note, it also says, "Council shares, in terms of downtown retail, council shares this concern, which is why we passed legislation, sharing the mixing uses of the five-day district for many of certain types of businesses." "Council agrees with that, sees assessment that writer great work on this topic requires expertise, probably on what kind of PC or device, PC you have to offer. Therefore, this is not seen to be a fruitful topic for, for this, in this country." So council would like our attention to, to focus elsewhere. So the three topics, then, in some way, shape, or form, that we can look at are the recodification code, affordable housing, and housing, the zoning code, the residential sections in the zoning code in general, and Montgomery Avenue. After this, I did have a few back and forths and emails with Council President Bush. One thing I clarified with him is that looking at the areas of five-day district around Norbert and Havreford would be appropriate, if it helped, have fun with, into council's goals for affordable housing. And secondly, the council president said that in pursuing these things, that we could work with specific council members directly as liaisons. And so for Montgomery Avenue, he mentioned Council Member Burak, who's here, and for housing issues, he recommended Council Member Galdini and Council Members Spear. If anyone remembered Jim Stein, on the planning commission, he crunched all those numbers until he broke. That's a lot of work it gave him was, was James Spears. And so, so first, I'm grateful to Council President for connecting us to specific council members that will help us work together, you know, to figure out how to be most productive in these forms. And secondly, I appreciate your coming tonight at my request to discuss these matters and maybe provide a little more insight into council's thinking on these topics and into how the planning commission can best work to advise council on these issues. That's what we're interested in doing. And so before we jump into it, I'd like to ask any of my colleagues, I just, my, for a long time, trying to set the stage, maybe have questions about that, or different memories of how we got here, or anything you'd kind of like to clarify about where we are in this discussion before we jump into this specific topic. Trying to rehearse the history because it's, it's important to kind of have that continuous line of thought. So what I'd like to do is hold off on the zoning code because Michael and Gene are here, and we'll talk about the issues that you can enlighten us on first. And so, I don't know, I could flip a coin. Do either of you have a preference for talking about Montgomery Avenue or housing first? I'd first like to ask if you could share anything further about council's intent, goals, hopes on these topics, and before we dig in or talk any further about. And I don't know, we can start with either.
You first? I could go first.
Okay. And by the way, thank you for sending your note over the week that I did forward to everyone else.
Okay, okay. So I can speak to the Montgomery Avenue, the transportation part of that. So Lower Marion, a few months ago, came to Norbert to, for grant application for the Safe Streets For All Grant, which would look at the entire corridor from end to end, starting from Spring Mill Road to City Avenue, and look at that entire corridor for safety improvements. So this would be looking at getting updated pedestrian and traffic data, looking at recommendations for intersection improvements beyond what's already there. Currently, there's only crosswalks and signals. What other traffic calming measures could be put there? That might include anything from road diets to bump outs, to, to speed tables or other things. And so Lower Marion wanted to partner with Norbert because it would make it a stronger application, and also we shared that border along that very important part of the Montgomery Avenue Commercial District. That's also a corridor that's in the walk shed for many amenities in the area, which includes. includes daycares and the schools. It's the Lower Marion High School walk zone is included in there. And so with all of those things, just partnering together to, and also partnering with DVRPC, coordinating with DVRPC and with Montgomery County Planning Commission. So it will be a partnership with all those organizations. And the entire grant is for, I think it was, the project cost was 340,000 and the grant application was for 200,000 from the federal DOT and Norbert's part of that was 7,500. So in that plan, if it was, if it's awarded, we're supposed to find out sometime between now and the end of this year. If that's awarded, the planning will start in 2025. And yeah, I don't know if you had any questions regarding that.
Yeah, we're finishing up the active transportation plan.
Right, so that's the other piece. We're waiting for the draft planning recommendations from the Lower Marion and Norbert Active Transportation Plan. And I don't know if Tim, you can shed a little bit more information on what's expected for Montgomery Avenue and the timeline for that.
Right now, we are working with Lower Marion to hammer out the final pieces of the network and the toolkit that are associated with the project because we're meeting with their staff just outside of planning, so fire, or fire safety, or fire safety, community developer and public works and to discuss what can and cannot be done within the reason of their different, basically approvals that they have to go through and what's within their code. So we're still working on that right now with them. Norbert has received all the toolkits, has received the toolkit and has given, passed around their staff, so I'll be giving a thumbs up in terms of the toolkits. So just working on, working on it right now with Lower Marion once we have Lower Marion's final sign off on several things we'll be able to produce. What will hopefully, what will be the initial draft for the network and what we have.
Okay, so the toolkit has already been received by the Norbert Bureau?
Uh, yeah, the staff has received the toolkit initially. So and then the network is the next thing that we need to hammer out, so.
Okay. So between that and the grant award, there's a couple of things that are hanging in the air. And after we get word about the award and have more specific recommendations for the Montgomery Ave, for the transportation plan, I think council would be ready to discuss what that process might look like and what the priorities are.
How long, the plan for which you're still awaiting is about the grant. How long does a plan like that take? Do you have any idea?
That's a good question. I'm not sure. I know there's very specific deadlines for all four grants. I would guess two years because that's usually the, that was also the timeline for the master park, that over there. But it would include a lot of public engagement sessions. I think there's a total of like 12 stakeholder sessions that are included. We're looking at 40 different intersections. So it would be a kind of a long process. And then I also spoke with Adam a little bit about doing a charrette for that Montgomery Avenue and if there would be any value to having more involvement from Norbert's part. Instead of, I don't know, maybe you can articulate a better part. Basically, the corridor for Montgomery Avenue is so, there's a lot of pieces to it and that Norbert segment is, is very important to us and for Norbert to have a big, bigger voice in that conversation, we wouldn't want to get lost in that whole big project.
Yeah, I definitely would like to drill down on that in a couple minutes with you to find out what you and Adam are thinking about that. But I'd like to ask your question before I'd affect him. So Tim, the note from council specifically asked us to discuss code changes recommended by active transportation plan and the potential traffic congestion. Do you, do you anticipate that there might be code recommendations that come out of your active transportation plan?
If you are producing some kind of active transportation, it will be more of a general recommendations to have land use in building, when buildings are set up, reflect the active transportation that you want. So you want to encourage, in a lot of form, basically where it does that, or you want to encourage more, or basic businesses, obviously no parking, front businesses closer to the sidewalk, your basic, classic, like firm town, downtown style and along your bigger network, or along your key networks is where you want those. So that really, it'd be a general, it'd be more of a general recommendation, pursue, continue to pursue this in your land uses, so.
But we wouldn't, I'm sensing that we'd drill down specific, I mean, it sounds like it'd be sort of urban design, land use, site planning type of things, but it wouldn't drill down specifically into things like potential densities and things like that from Montgomery Avenue. It'd be more of a kind of a higher level type of set of organizations. So there would be a lot of work left to do. Does the active transportation plan talk about parking?
Well, we're likely to.
Does it talk about managing parking in an environment like this?
We're not, there, we have like several names in our back pocket for finer end policy recommendations and that will still have to be brought up. We're, but right now, the only things we're pretty heavily focusing on are network, basically, basically physical infrastructure that we own in the ground before we get to policy stuff. So we have a discussion about policy stuff. That's what I mean by, or code that can hurt the parking.
So it's like, is that like a subset of things that what you're doing or?
It'll be a part of the plan. It's just more along the lines of, we're still, that's for now.
And do you think all that will come together?
The goal was end of the year this year, but we, we're, it's as long as, we're still, like I said, working on the network and it's okay with lower Marion. So once, Lower Marion wants, we're done working on it with them, once everybody's set with that, we'll be able to, be able to set a better timeline now, like with spring. So.
So it sounds like the first several months of next year will be, a lot of things will come into, into view. And I, well, I somebody want ideas about transportation, physical transportation improvements, some general ideas about the use, or inform that we can evaluate and start with the code. And we'll know whether or not that press could receive from the trajectory maybe to that plan. So I guess it's, it gets too hypothetical now in a way, I suppose, most, this has to wait for a couple of months. But do you, do you all see, do you think council sees an opportunity for beginning to explore things like land use, parking, density type issues, the kinds of things you might look at in a charrette in 2025 at all while the, this plan is wrapping up and the other thing is underway?
Yeah, I think so. I think once we get those recommendations from both the Lower and Norbert Active Transportation Plan and if we start the planning phase for, if we are granted that award, that would be a really good opportunity to start talking about those things. And if from those plans, we also get recommendations to look into recodifying, that might be a role that planning commission might be able to play and board council would kind of make that request of planning commission to look at that.
So I know Adam, you were, you were interested in exploring the idea of a charrette in O'Jen. From time to time, when we started work on zoning code, we had some charrette type meetings when we started work on station circles, when we started, we had some charrette type meetings. What would that look like next year? How would it move about forward to have some, something like that occur next year? I'm sort of want to draw on your guys' expertise and experience. Kind of wrapping from, by council, because Jennifer, I can do that here.
Not my problem.
Typically, a charrette is focused on a, on a more less concrete problem or site or development, something like that. And so we would need, we would need to boil this down to the, to the point where it has some concrete substance. And then you can, then you can find out what people think about it. A charrette is really, what do you, there's really much people are in a room vocalizing what they think about a topic. I think it should be this way. No, you're crazy. I think it should be that way. That's what charrette is. And if it's, if it's an amorphous thing, it will not be effective in a limited upbringing experience.
So I think a charrette is supposed to produce design drawings within, you know, I think National Charrette Institute might have guidelines on it. They might recommend something like three days of work, but you know, in many cases you can make a lot of progress in one day or sort of, you know, two days. It depends on the, how much time you can give to it. You have to have architects or designers as facilitators, like professionals, and generally you would break into smaller groups of say four, five people at a time. So if you got 20 people to a charrette, you divide them into, given a general plenary discussion and workshop, but when it comes to design, you might actually do five different versions, right, at five different tables and then essentially pin those up and then later consolidate it down and distill it to the, to like a conceptual recommended design. But the intent is to, is to tackle all of the problems of a design at once and benefit from the community, like benefit from the wisdom of multiple people participating in that, but not just to talk about it, but to actually try to solve a problem and actually document it saying like, yes, this is a good design for these reasons. The nice thing about, so when we think about Montgomery Avenue, it's a long corridor through Lower Marion and even slightly beyond, and it goes through a lot of different character zones and a lot of sort of different types of land uses along it. The piece in Norbert is a relatively, you know, discrete problem set, right? Even within Norbert, there's some differences in land use, but it's small enough that if you have a public engagement process, you can actually work on designing that piece. What I like about the charrette approach is that rather than have generic roadway cross sections and sort of overarching policies, you try to apply those ideas in a design documentation way where you're trying to get more towards preliminary engineering, if you will, to hopefully become a project for construction. Because, you know, firstly, I'm kind of impatient to see some physical improvements and get some momentum. The corollary with land uses, because if you're doing it in urban design, it's essentially an urban design workshop for the road, you know, if, if it works from a facilitation standpoint, you could potentially talk about trying to capture the vision for any development, you know, guidelines that might come along. So again, if there's going to be redevelopment or, you know, infill development, that, that could be to show how that would interact with the new street infrastructure. So, and it could even potentially include things like, you know, are we going to say we want to build a new, a new build to line that's further set back, you know, to get a little more width on the sidewalk or pedestrian realm? I don't know. But that's the kind of thing you could look at in some detail if you're actually doing design workshop.
Yeah, I mean, I agree with a lot of what I was saying about how a charrette works, but you definitely want to kind of take the handcuffs off and come up with very big ideas, sometimes that are not really even implementable, to start a vision of what it could be. For instance, like you'd want to bracket a part of the street that sort of says you're entering Norbert, you're leaving Norbert, something that sort of says, you know, this is a section of our borough, which it's amorphous right now. It's all kind of the same, you know, you don't really know what it is. But then there's also other problems that you want to identify, like particular crosswalks that are really key and problematic in places, you know, the ones that kids use a lot to go to school or things like that, and really make a point of solving those in some greater detail. And then I think there's all this sort of like pie in the sky stuff that we love to see, like tear these buildings down and start over again, but we realize it's probably not going to happen. So I think that there's a wide range of practical and sort of big picture things that would happen during a charrette. And then you sort of, you know, you kind of go back to that vision later on, maybe when it's opportune that you can address issues of, if let's say a building's coming down, something like that.
Just, yeah, one other thing about this is that, you know, the intent is to have participants, right, from the community be helping with the design, right, and getting their thoughts down. And so you hopefully are building a grassroots coalition to help support implementation because they actually did participate in putting the pen to the paper to come up with a solution.
Now often it's, you separate the visioning sessions, which includes, like a lot of people you did for the parks, for instance, with, let's say the charrette, which is done more with professionals that are kind of more about coming up with solutions. So I'm not saying that they couldn't be put together, it's just often what they are.
Yeah, I mean, you can have, you can have the professionals do some work after the design development. So again, I mean, charrette literally means cart because the French version was there's a defined time limit, you're sort of turning in your work, it's almost like a competition, and then you pin it up and discuss, right? So that the cart would go around the room is the idea and everyone had to put their drawings on the cart, right? So the, the initial first flush of it isn't necessarily the final version, the professionals could go back and basically produce better drawings and better renderings and so on, but that you, you build that sort of consensus, that, you know, professionals cost about $1,000 each per day. So the other intent is to really try to get that professional time to produce something that you really see a lot of value from, right? So that from a budget perspective.
Yeah, what process you're describing is exactly, exactly what we did, the station circle a couple of years ago, where a group of citizens, a large group of citizens, about 80 maybe, assembled in the big room here and given a cartoon that I drew of the area around Station Circle. Were given free reign to draw on large sheets of paper what their ideas were for, for improving that space and humanizing it, with or without parking, with or without amenities of any imaginable type. The result was a bunch of scraply drawings that were drawn with markers and big marking pens and little, weensey pencils and all different ways, all of which were collected and given, given over to Sonamie Collins, who was using them and doing exactly what was just described to process them as a statement of public desire for that space. It didn't get very far, it still hasn't gotten very far. But that is the. But that is the, that is the classic process, that's exactly what we did. And we are still pursuing that.
I think the way you're describing the sherret, it also involves with the professionals, it involves significant costs. So one of the conversations that Adam and I had was, is there a way to incorporate that kind of concept within the, the planning process that comes out of the Safe Streets For All planning process? And I think ideally, that would be the best route to go, just because it would be, otherwise it would be a, a big load on Narberth, on the staff, it would be an extra cost. So to roll it into that entire planning process, I think is probably the best way to go, if we can do that.
Now, the Safe Streets For All, though, is primarily focused on the safety of the street, the crosswalks and things like that, not necessarily development beyond that, right? And we may have an interest in what happens beyond that as well. I'm sorry.
There's two things that I'm thinking of. One, MCPC has, that is our design department, which if given enough lead time could probably, and if Lower Merion is involved, looking as well, could probably develop a sherret for our conversation. And then the other thing is if DBRBC is involved with this Safe Streets For All grant, and the Safe Streets For All grant is going to be focused on Montgomery Avenue, they have access to a couple of features, one which is Remix Streets, which is actually like an online sherret where you can, they can literally give you, here is the true right way, draw the road however you want for the entire stretch and see what physically fits, which could also work as a secondary. I don't know what DBRBC's costs are in terms of leading that, but that would definitely be another.
But you, you could provide some support for the actual organizing of the sherret.
Yeah.
There are, there are consulting agreements.
With enough lead time, our design can figure a lot, it's just giving them that lead time, so.
There's a potential resource to leverage that contract we've already committed.
Yeah, and just as a reminder, if the, if the, well, are we reimbursing the county for that time? Is that how it works?
It's.
You would, so because that, that can count as an in-kind match, I would think, for the federal dollars, so.
You know, myself have experienced all kinds of sherrets, not leading them, but participating as an advisor. And I see that one of the values of a sherret, if it's held at the right moment, it can, it can operate at all levels you're talking about. It can problem solve some tricky aspects of an area, it can establish visions, but mostly I think it can galvanize and send a signal to all the communities, the citizens, the development community, that this is where we're going. And it might result in institutional changes like the creation, it was a wonder resulting in the creation of a business improvement district to facilitate public services. It could result in public improvements like parks or new policies or codes, all different kinds of things, but it really does, it sort of, if it's done right, can galvanize. And so I think the judgment call would be, it's 2025, we're trying to galvanize people around a new, a new direction and other forces and play to follow through, right? On that energy that you are, you know, it's, it's a powerful tool and then you're unleashing a lot of energy at the end for your community investment. And that would be a question which, which leads me to another question. The direct request from council was for the planning commission to reach out to the Lower Merion Planning Commission on the topic of joy from Montgomery Avenue. So my question for you all is, what do you all know about liaisons occurring right now, like between our elected officials and Lower Merion's elected officials, between our staff and Lower Merion's planning staff? I think, I think all of those sorts of seeds or those connections have to be in play. What is your sense of, of that?
Well, thank you for bringing that up because I think that's like really key. I think we do have to work very closely with the Lower Merion Township. And there's, there's a couple of things. When the Lower Merion High School, Lower Merion School District was considering the walk zone expansion, there was an intragovernmental committee that kind of formed around that, and the main topic of discussion was pedestrian safety around that walk zone. And I don't, since they rolled back that plan to expand that walk zone, I don't think there's been any movement on that, but there could be progress on that at some point. But I think whatever we do, we, we do have to partner with Lower Merion for all of this and work and make sure that, also from a certification standpoint, that it's aligned on both sides.
Right.
And I know our, our staff has relationships with the staff at Lower Merion.
Right.
And I don't know if, because obviously the manager was here before, I don't know if he developed those relationships during his first tenure and is maintaining them through, or if he's, we developed them anew, but I have heard from him directly, and I think that the staff has a relationship with staff at Lower Merion, and they're continuing to strengthen that relationship.
Strangely, I think, unless you have the attention of the board commissioner, this is going to be hard to do in collaboration. The last time I talked to Chris Leszter about it, he said, well, you know, this is like three chapters down the road from me, nobody pushing me, you know? And I, and not expectation, but, but land use planning. I mean, we, you know, it's like talking to Chris Leszter, you know, he'll spin out, like we can have a joint parking authority, you know, we can trade development rights, you know? He's got all these ideas, but then he says, well, the thing is, there's no one in the township that has a Montgomery Avenue. Land use as a prior, but they're worried about City Avenue, you know, they're worried about Ardmore, that's what they've been working on the last 15 years. I mean, they're all there, they, I don't know where they go with that. So that, that would be an interesting question, is, do you have a rate on the board commissioner?
Yeah, it's a good question, and that's also why I think that a joint grant is a good opportunity because it highlights a space that I think, I won't say no one, I rarely say no one, but I kind of think no one loves what currently happened in the way it is today. And so, to me, only speaking for myself, the grant has provided an opportunity to rethink the space in terms of pedestrian multimodal safety, but also in terms of those broader visions. But I know that we, we have been in something of a holding pattern as we see whether that's going to lead to some sort of process, but yeah, I, either way, whether it does or it doesn't, I mean, it's a point we'll take in that, that kind of engagement with Lower Merion has to occur at all levels, including the political governing body.
Because like, we do never get into the staff or ground council. Like, I'm trying to imagine what is the conversation with Lower Merion's planning commissioner going to be like.
You don't want to joke a public comment at the Lower Merion.
We're interested in this, are you interested in this? Have you had any conversations with your politicians or your staff? That's about as far as it could go, right?
Yeah.
But I doubt they, like we, aren't in a position to, you know, tell the council or tell the staff what to do. So I think in my, in my read of things, it would probably, the, the more kind of causal connections are the elected officials first and then the staff second. And if the agenda's set, then the planning commissions could fruitfully collaborate, you know, on, on something like this. That would be my take on things.
The other opportunity would be public engagement, public campaign, that everybody processes, the neighbors do.
Don't make our neighborhood happy if you try to.
Well, I'm not saying, I'm not saying.
I bet Lower Merion tries to engage our public in something, and our council members aren't there, but that would be.
I'm not saying that the planning commissioner does it, I'm saying, I'm saying any public entity does it, but if there's people that are having conversations with each other, really.
Yeah, so, you know, the, the conversation between the planning officials can't go real far. You can just sort of put each on notice that they're interested in this. My last question is, in 2025 seems close, but the end of 2025 is like 15, 16 months away. So there could, it could well be that next year would be a great time to have a sherret. And you're, you're right, to do it, to do it right involves some months of help and some class. I did get a, you know, email from Matt West, again, much appreciated, asking any borough edgy that had suggestions for the borough's budget to bring them forward so that they could be in front of the council for consideration and put the budget together for next year. So I'm wondering, is that a route for a few thousand dollars? You just put a, a line graph in the budget for a sherret that might match some other funds or something like that, just, just in case it becomes something we do next year? Is that, is that something that is worth asking?
Yeah.
I think so.
Nothing ventured, nothing gained.
I mean, I, I mean, I would, I would like to say that, you know, I'm just going to frame something, it's either my colleagues or, but we'd like to respond to the council and say, we're happy to support, but our deeper work on Montgomery Avenue, you know, can give a call to the planning commission chair, see what's they're thinking, but that maybe it would be odd to just prepare, prepare for the possibility that next year there should be some public engagement, a potential in the form of a sherret that can really galvanize our communities around some big changes, such as to ever see a new depth and new journey, and that we, you know, that one of the things council might consider is setting aside a little bit of money for that in the budget for next year. That would be a planning commission request.
Well, so we don't have the grant yet for Safe Streets For All, but if we get that grant, and then maybe there could be a, and the borough is contributing to the local match, so, you know, maybe there can be a, I don't know, we could ask, have a scope element, right, that's focused on the Kenwood-Narberth area. And then, to your point, if, with the land use piece, even if that were out of scope for the safety aspects, you could potentially bolt onto that process, it's separately funded element, you know, but if you wanted to get more into the land use piece, then just the right way.
What piece is intended as well?
Well, exactly, so it's integrated to the process, right?
How's that sound to you, Matt? Sounds good. Would that be a Rockford and Mary Commission meeting?
So you're saying, just to clarify, incorporate land use as well as the transportation?
Well, there's a lot of moving parts. So number one, I think what we'd like to suggest to council is that, you know, getting this under the priority agenda of the elected board commissioner and the staff is essential. That, secondly, whether or not the borough, if it's a very successful in obtaining this grant for next year, maybe what we can do is, you know, in the scope, whereas we can concurrently organize some sort of sherret type process to explore other aspects of the avenue beyond simply pedestrian safety, land use, you know, urban design, parking, all the things that we need to think about to have a successful mixed-use district, right? And that, which might require a little bit of, a little bit of funding above and beyond what your grant would provide. And that, that's not certain that, that would make sense next year, it just might. And so maybe we should get ready for that potentially, put a little more in the budget and sort of wait and see in the spring, what makes sense, and if it makes sense, play for sherret this time next year.
I'm just wondering if it might overcomplicate it, just because I know with federal grants, they have very strict requirements of how that money is spent and.
And we just do it on our own, perhaps.
I mean, yeah, I mean, it doesn't necessarily, because I think it makes sense to think of that from a holistic perspective, because realistically, any, any, take pedestrian improvements, right? Pedestrian improvements without the land uses to actually support pedestrian activity on a street is not a call to dead letter, but you know, it's a lot less effective than one could otherwise. So obviously, thinking about it holistically, I think makes, only speaking for myself, thinking about it holistically and having a holistic vision to it, I think it makes sense. And it's synergistic to either planning effort, even if it's not.
Formally part of it.
Yes.
So maybe.
Individually.
Talk about scoping it as part of the process, because if it's processed, it could be an opportunity to also do this, option to also to do this, deeper dive into the Narberth stretch of Lower Merion. So that we don't complicate the federal grant. Maybe we required the borough to consider, set aside, we can draw from resources from my, my planning commission, we've already committed way before, because I do. Because we don't, you know, we just don't really know what, or where something like this might, what might be the right moment for it, but it could well be next year. And so, and maybe what we would like to do is encourage you to keep our, council to keep our options open while we're busy in the near term making all these inter jurisdictional connections. You all for the report? So looking at time, if it's okay, if there's nothing else on this, perhaps we can move to the other topic, which is the multifaceted housing topic. That would be the second one to talk about. And so, as with the other topic, Michael, perhaps we could call on you to share a little bit more about council's thinking on this and what council would like to see from, from our, the planning.
Sure. And before I jump into that, I also wanted to mention, even though I think at this time that there was, the response on the, the business development piece that you all had kind of commented on was, I think that the response was not something to work on in terms of planning commission this time. I did want to articulate that an appreciation, that you all highlighted that as an important issue, and acknowledge that it is an important issue. And I just, I, I had heard through the grapevine that the, the state is currently revamping its Main Street program, and so just wanted to let you all know that that's on our radar to track whatever that ends up being. Maybe that becomes an avenue and we work on that issue, or maybe it doesn't, but it's, but that issue is certainly on the radar. So I just wanted to, to reassure you all that even though kind of that piece hadn't been elevated in council's response back, that we acknowledge and appreciate, you know, maybe that is an issue and something that's on the radar. So I just wanted to make sure I acknowledge that upfront.
That feels good, thank you.
Thank you. No, thank you, guys. And then in terms of the housing piece, replication piece, I call it piece, it's massive, obviously, right? Also wanted to, to just kind of start off that entire conversation by saying that, thank you to this body and especially the gym for all of the work that you've done a couple years back to have the form of this, kind of starting from so much of a higher level than I think we would have been if we were working off of a post-war Euclidean base code. And so really, at this point, I think what we're, what, so a lot of the conversation was, was drilling down on, on some of the policies that we have towards our site development standards and things like that, that create a meaningful amount of non-conformities in our existing housing typologies and that effectively cause or are causing the new development that we see in our residential areas to, to make man shize. And, and prevent a lot of the mill scale typologies that have historically formed the next increment of growth in Narberth's traditional growth pattern. I would say, I know that that's kind of sounds super high level, and it is super high level, I think that there, that, that council also needs to have kind of amongst ourselves a, a policy discussion over what some of the deeper priorities within the housing space are beyond just kind of, you know, looking at affordability, looking at non-conformity. housing space are beyond just kind of, you know, look at affordability, look at nonconformities and those sorts of things. And so I think that, you know, again, just speaking for myself, I think that, you know, we should have some of those discussions that we can come back to with a greater level, especially the street. But I know that in terms of the thinking that we've had so far, certainly a look at the typeology, the middle-scale typologies that exist in Narborough today and that were the traditional next increment of growth, single-family attached structures, multiplexes, cottages, a lot of those things that exist in one form or another in our code today, but haven't been the ones that have been opted to in a number of cases. And looking at some of the things that may be driving or nonconformities and potentially driving the reasons why an infill developer might opt for a large lot, a mansion-style project rather than a mansion, mid-scale meaning style project. I think a lot of the, a lot of the nonconformities that we see relate to our lot size standards or our lot width standards, to some of those nuts and bolts items that the DNA of those was kind of, was carried, carried through over time and still kind of remain in our code today and would effectively prevent you from getting all the number of things with that next increment of growth. And also just thinking about it from the standpoint of when we did the land development code, or I'm sorry, the zoning code, terminology for codes mixed up. When we did our zoning code revision last, we obviously didn't have a historic preservation ordinance on the books. And so trying to synthesize those so that, so that we're providing for the space for this middle-scale housing within the context of the expectation that most of the structures in the borough were expecting to be preserved. So how do you figure out, you know, how do you figure out your growth within that context? So, that's a lot. It was very dry. It was necessarily high level, but I'm happy to, happy to discuss any further, if you had any other.
No, I think you covered it pretty well.
Oh, it's a tough problem because the economics aren't working against it big time.
Yes. A large proportion of that, I think, has to do, especially with land costs as well, right? So like, I think I did like a kind of back-of-the-envelope math on some projects that occurred near me. And, you know, I think a single-family detached housing typology is the minimum lot size that is 6,000 square feet right now. So functionally, if you have a lot of that size, your break-even cost is going to be something like a million dollars to build in a single unit, right? So at that point, you have to, there's no choice for you. If you are a, if you're an infill developer doing something like that, you have to make it as injury as possible. And I think the only real way to get around that is to disperse that land cost across several smaller lots. And then that's the way you change the economics of that sort of thing, to try to get a lower sale point.
From a big picture of all of that is that if the code stays the same as it is, we're just going to keep getting these luxury mansions, these large, huge houses. And it will progressively change the, change what Narborough looks like 20, 30 years from now. So in order for us to kind of keep that Narborough character, which is a lot, like a big diversity of mixed-up housing, it does need some repopulation.
And one of the things, and thank bringing up like the economics of how these work, one of the things that was striking to me was just, my impression has been, and this may be a mistaken impression, but my impression has been that a lot of the muscle memory for that scale of builder has potentially been driven by the zoning codes that they see originally. And some of the things that I've heard were, well, you know, at this point, I don't want to provide a cottage, I don't want to provide, because I don't, I know that there's a, I know that there's a guaranteed market for like a large lot, luxury, single-family. And my impression had been that, well, municipalities all around you make that easiest typology, and then you have a lot of that being built, and then you're seeing those selling. There's something of a feedback loop there. And how do you make that feedback loop? I think that probably, my own personal takeaway is that, you know, if zoning regulations were at large, have started to create that sort of feedback loop, then it's incumbent on zoning regulations to help break that feedback loop. But anyway, so that was just an observation that I had from kind of like trying to poke around and hear perspectives on kind of middle-scale housing and why we see a lot of certain typologies. And, you know, if, if an infill builder's goal is to do the easiest thing that they can do with a guaranteed return, and there is a very large market with a lot of money, then kind of that's their, that's their lowest risk version of the thing. Does that mean that that's the only market out there? That's not what that means, right?
Exactly. It just means it's not the most populous market for that particular building.
Yes. And I think recognizing those dynamics was, I just, I thought that was interesting to have you observe, so I just wanted to.
Yeah, I think I was going through to know when it said like, yeah, I can build a cottage, but I just don't want to be the first one to build one. And like, I mean, my, my thought first of all is like, you could probably bust anything here and you could sell it. I don't know what you're worried about. But I also get, I understand that they're looking for the least friction possible. That's the way it's always been everywhere. And then everyone's got a blind piece of land, thinks they're going to be the person who's going to make the next killing, right? That's why you, you know, and so their, their mindset is, is they're going to hold out. They have the best property in the world and they're going to hold out for the top dollar and stuff. But you're right, the, the, in theory, the way that, the way that the codes are structured can break that cycle. And so that, and at the same time, we have the challenge of doing that for new construction while trying to figure out how we move more of our existing stock, how to not conform it, then to conform it. And those, those could be like sometimes working in opposite directions eventually. But it's, we've realized that for years, so.
Yeah. And that actually is kind of what also provides an opportunity for us, right? A lot of communities, when they have that sort of conversation, you go immediately to like, what's your worst-case scenario? People start envisioning bulldozers coming in and knocking over the entire town, right? And we have the unique opportunity in that so much of our, of our town is, does not have by right demolition, right? You know, a historic district. The danger is if we don't figure out the zoning, then that potentially over a long term makes us more unaffordable if we don't actually figure out the ways that we grow. The benefit is that it allows us the space to have conversations about some of these things, without the specter of everything changing all over the place.
Yeah. So the question I have then is, you know, in the past, the planning permission has recommended some smaller typologies we want to propose in here in the news, which is very small infill housing, that could actually work for deep law. And, you know, one solution also is the potential of, who are denser residential problems, like apartment type of, in certain areas, right? That's why we had a presentation for Penrose to really understand. So does that work, like, for housing finance and developers and coastal services? So are those, would those be within the kind of scope of a presentation?
I would think so. Like I said, I think that council also needs to kind of have a meeting of the minds as a body. But I know that, you know, at a high level, we had an interest in, I think that the way we stated in our council, our adopted goals and objectives was housing diversity, right, which I think speaks to the first item that you had asked about, and affordability, which I think speaks to the second.
Because I think the ultimate council can accept or reject certain ideas, but exploring that I think would be critical in understanding what tools we're going to have. Could we have exuded buildings around 10 pound that get to the scale where you can actually do this, or the subsidies that we would apply, tax credits, which we can't really get to at the scale that we tend to go to, or, you know, overcome avenues, places, whether we look there is a five-day, whether they're, I guess, another thing I think is maybe you're hinting at, I don't know, to sort of test the depth of appetite. Well, that's one thing to talk about, housing options. We can talk about what it means, maybe more houses get divided into two units. Maybe we have more smaller infill units on the south side, you know, these become the touch points. So understanding what, you know, the community and ultimately what council wants to recruit as appetite, because this is important. The only way to get to that is like to try out different ideas. It's a really weird.
So what's the process we're looking to follow?
Well, I don't know yet. That's really, I'm glad you asked that, because that's the next, the next question. I think, I think that one of the processes we've, we've followed as a group, took some of the things from the past, we used to pick a couple of sites and just sort of study them, like what could happen with them. Like, you know, when we were studying, for example, the cottage, the word is that like cottages gave, our study, like six sites around the borough, there, residential infill was possible, and tested out different, you know, tested out.
Oh, just used.
Tested out. Did you read something about it? So I think one methodology might be just to, just to like a couple of sites that are actually real, potential local sites in our historic, and play with what could happen. Another one might be to look at, and that could include sites of urban development too, like, could there have been a different outcome during Tuesday, the properties we have, what would that have implied, different rules of laws? Could we come up with a better solution for 714? I know you worked very hard on it, but can we come up with a better solution for 714? Or if Adam, writing goes away, which it might be possible, what would, we can pick sites like that and study them, right? If the idea of maximizing housing, we also might look at areas like, you know, I don't know, a wood mine and see if we were to apply the code we have there now, which buildings would be affordable, which ones wouldn't be, what do we have to do to fix?
Spoiler alert on that one is basically none of it.
And then like, what would a code look like that maybe that's conforming? And then they play a pack, and how would you apply that to, I mean, that would be a different second methodology. And that addresses that kind of. Then I think we've tended to do those little, was the RBCD used those things? There's a term that Dave used to use about schedule those things. But then we went, after we studied the sites, I couldn't say like, what kind of code, what would it take in our code to like pre-responds them? So that would be, that would be two potential methods. Site studies then, trying to see system districts, do they, to be kind of the kind of districts that council's saying that we'd like to be able to have this kind of house.
You mean to analyze the, what code would support?
Yes.
Right?
Yeah.
A particular type of development that's already existing.
So it's a big that.
And I just, the, you know, we got a sort of Freedom of Information Act-type request the other day about, we had the presentation from Penrose, and the, so obviously, small house development or, you know, microhousing, cottages, things like that are one way to try to provide housing that would be affordable. But it just, I think it's worth reminding that there's apartment-style affordable housing with income requirements really, so that it's definitely being led to people with, you know, that need affordable housing. But the, I know it's complicated because of the whole area median income approach and things like that often make it less affordable than you would perhaps hope for. But we also heard how hard it was just to put together a deal to create that type of housing, other, they said almost by definition, you end up with a financial gap. So nevertheless, I think, you know, if you can analyze where we can put in small housing or change the lots, but unless you do, there aren't, there aren't, it's not a lot of vacant land, right? So it could be challenging.
But there's, I know spots to keep this, this, you know, Montgomery Avenue, we need to larger scale.
Well, that's why I think Montgomery Avenue can, you know, could withstand larger buildings to stand up to the larger roadway, right? It already has three-story commercial buildings.
By the way, you know, I'm working on the neighborhood where Central Philly Road and West is active. They're building townhouses. They're not building multifamily buildings. They're building, they'll have your own houses, but they're not in those areas. So it's not like everything they go through these deals. You just need to be able to get enough units. And so those box facility are towards the lady, in terms of units. But the housing typology isn't, isn't the densest housing. So.
Yeah.
There's ways to add or something, I don't know.
Yeah, it's also, I mean, it is contingent on what percentage of affordability you're trying to achieve, because a true like low-income tax credit deal takes into account 20% of the housing cost, 30% income, like much lower tiers, but affordable housing could also be constituted as 80%. And that could be more achievable in smaller clusters if it's like a five-minute development, one of those units has to be 80%, and the other four units can be market rate. Like those types of zoning requirements exist in different jurisdictions where they have bonuses that are allowed if they do for sure to provide a tax number of units that qualify.
So Adam, maybe to refine my methodologies. Jennifer, great reason, think about how Jennifer, the commission she does, about that, as we might say, like, so, you know, this study might say like, so if the ready-to-slay was we develop, what would, in your role, what would people need to make something about that for the full housing? So it'd say, well, we need 20-year-hands-term, which like this, 15-year-hands-five-year, which like this, whatever. And then, understanding what a kind of yield is the, maybe. maybe even the title, making them begin to think about how do you get that from the money?
I almost feel like the conversation has to be divided between large-scale development opportunities that exist largely along the border with Montgomery Avenue. And then the smaller infill development are existing, build, single-family to multi-class conversion.
Where it's kind of extremes.
Yeah, you have a little bit, two different, two different.
The way, the way I always describe it is capital A affordable housing, which is your lowercase a, affordable housing, where you're describing duplexes, eight years, all the small spaces.
Then we have the middle area, like, block level.
That's right. Yeah, because it is an interesting point, I want to discuss this. The number of apartments that exist in existing builds in Norbert, like 1950 builds, that actually fall under the lowercase a affordable housing. So we're not subsidized housing, but the rent that's being asked for the size of the unit is actually under market value for the area.
Natural.
But the new construction will always come in at that upper-level market value. And so it's finding that balance against there are large-size, single-family houses that somebody wants to convert into a duplex or triplex. And by building code, different conversation, we could do it. Could, could the zoning code allow it? Because those units, by being in older buildings, tend to have a lower rent cap by nature.
Gave it, that's the word. Just like gave it. Just to give it this different sense, give it up. So I think, does that kind of represent like what you were thinking might happen?
I, I think so. Let me also check with Jean as I don't, you know, because I'm one person.
I think it's something that we have to take back to council and discuss further. Suss out, but I mean.
So we could write this up, let's like, here's how we propose to do it and send it back to you for you to consider.
I think that's all.
Yeah.
You know, of the typologies that you mentioned in terms of gaming and what would you do? I think if we were to look, there aren't too many open lots, right? We know that. But what are the lots that are potential tear-down lots? Because they would be allowed to be tear-downed, right? And what would likely be the scenario of filling them back in? And then how could we fix that problem of it being in a mansion? I think we headed in that direction, maybe?
Yeah.
That, that should be one of our primary kind of gaming targets is to figure out what happens in those scenarios. Because that's the most likely one that's going to happen. And again, it's, it's not going to be a stately house that someone's going to tear down. It's going to be, I think, ones that are a little bit more, you know, kind of the dilapidated ones, but they can't be too old either. Right? There's going to be a small window that we could probably figure out what they are.
Well, the, for the, those houses, it'll be with a delta between the existing house and something that would become some great, there's some imperative, if that's something. So I think that's what Jennifer was saying, like, there's different scales in which this is going to be studied. There's the more in the brain of town, where there might be one-off pots in there. And there's also maybe a handful, maybe half a dozen or so larger sites, either in the core or Montgomery Avenue, that might be, provide other kinds of activities. And this, this might be things where the guy can hurt, right? This is, it's a whole range of different kinds of scenarios in this study like this. And obviously, what's we, if we were to say, well, that's how we do it, then we'll probably get a lot of ideas. We should look at that site, we should look at that site, and then that's fine. So we can, we can communicate that back and get feedback from you along. The last topic, which I hopefully made up quickly, quickly, is, is the recodification. Which, again, would be a kind of policy-neutral idea, just sort of unscrambling how the recent amendments over the last couple of years were codified. And they wander into some questions about, that are substantive, particularly around non-conforming uses. Because remember when we talked about Essex Avenue, was it 119 Essex Avenue? That house that the dentist wanted to determine their dentist's office as an apartment? And we realized that like, where these, the non-conforming, not the sections in the code about non-conforming just didn't play well together, gaps and so forth. Then maybe one area where we have to try to make some patches. But I think the general idea is that to try and create more eligibility in the code by organizing it differently. A lot of the effort, I think, would be in the 5A district to, you know, indicate things like that Windsor Avenue might be a sub-district and calling out all the special rules for Windsor Avenue in one place. Or putting all, you know, it's really incredible how many places you will find a conditional use or a special exception in the code. I mean, just all of a sudden, you're reading about signs and it says, but you have this sign with a special exception, like, no one ever knew it. So it might also be trying to reorganize things so it's easy to find those things. And I think then, that, that just may be like a thought experiment project because ultimately that could lead to questions like, well, why do we have a special exception at all for that? Or why is that a conditional use? What, what were we thinking and why? But I think the first step is to try to do it as value-neutral as, as policy-neutrally as possible, and then see where it leads us and where there needs to be maybe broader steps to patch or re-adiduate or accommodate new things like the things we're talking about for housing. I think that could probably, as a thought experiment, start pretty quickly. And you, I'm sorry, Tim, I was, when we're talking about housing, I was going to ask, when you and I spoke, you thought that could be a project that MCPC could help right now with its capacity?
The housing, I mean?
Housing?
Yes.
Yeah. So what, do you have any additional thoughts about? I should have asked you, so, like, some, some.
I can definitely, so the additional thoughts are, we are currently in the process of creating a new product that we're giving to all of our contract communities, which is a zoning audit where we take a look at your zoning code and basically provide recommendations that you could do to increase affordable housing options. So it's a combination of what we're talking about for how to add that lowercase a to your code based on how it's written. And then how to, or, and then how to kind of link up with capital A affordable housing, so.
So you, you actually do this analysis for each group? Or for the community, or it's like a pull-up making use?
At the request of the community, we kind of wait until it form those.
So we'll add that to our menu of things for council to consider. Should we request MCPC to run this audit? It may be the first step.
And then the other thing is I could put you guys in contact with Montgomery County Housing Development because they are now, they are now expanding interest into the field of managing affordable housing.
This is the county?
Which is a great thing because then we have somebody directly managing. Because that's the big issue when it comes to your subsidized affordable housing is that you need someone to manage it and verify anything else. And Norbert, I don't know if, if Norbert has the full capacity, staffing capacity for that, but having that to count for, we've discussed, Lord Marion has their own setup. So that would also be, I think, is at least creating conversations with the planning commission and council, with these entities that could assist with, if, if Norbert goes down the path of getting some of the subsidized housing as a bonus, how to manage it, so.
Do you have a sample of the completed audit?
Uh, no, because we just created the, we just created the product about a month and a half ago.
You have a team for Guinea figure? You always, always person in armor, maybe what's the name?
My, my Guinea figure, the Guinea figure right now is landfill. And I'm working on theirs currently. So they get, they get the first, they get the first bit, but I have, because we have had this discussion and I've had them, and I've ripped a few notes on the side.
Do you have like a, a prospectus for this service that I can attach it to and rate to council?
I can get one for you.
Like Montgomery County Planning Commission do this, and this is what involves, and.
But it's, it's, we're, we're like, I'm looking forward to utilizing the communities because it's, it's just kind of saying, well, we can just make these recommendations. Maybe don't want to follow them, but just noticing how the patterns are. Here's some things we just brought out there. And we can use those as a basis for our tests and workshop and stuff with the lots. That should get it all.
We'll muddle through. I'm reminded that the form-based code that we are currently talking about, recodifying, was actually written by Montgomery County Planning Commission under the watchful gaze of, of Sean Metrick, then consultant to the planning commission back before the dawn of recorded history.
And that was in the.
19, no, 18, oh, 2006, something like that.
So it took 10 years to do it?
It took 10 years to do it.
And that was, that was a loss later for this?
Most of, most of the heavy lifting was done by Montgomery County Planning Commission, all the graphics, if you look at the, you know, came out of here, shot. And a lot of the language and the, the philosophy was generated in this room with a lot of input from Sean, who was himself a community planner. As he undoubtedly know. So here we go again. It's like, you know.
So the last thing I'll ask, because to like to finish, well, today, is some of you did indicate to me which of these projects you would like to work on. Some folks said they like to work on Montgomery Avenue in particular. But let me know, note the saying now, but if, so this is what I imagine doing is we would kind of create a couple of small working groups to work on these topics once we get really good, a good work plan that, that council's happy with. So if you are interested in being in any of these work groups, wanting to work, let me know, just let me know. And when we get going, then we'll plug you in. Does anyone else have any comments or questions about, about this? About, are you guys, have you, where we've gotten today?
Yeah, thank you.
I'm glad you guys could come, thank you. It's really helpful to be able to have a conversation with, with you about this work so that it can sort of land in the right spot and to make sure that both the commission and council are really, you know, focusing on the questions that we need to, if we want to make any progress on these things. So, so thank you for that. Okay. Is there anyone in from the public in the Zoom meeting?
No.
Okay. Because usually, if there's a public comment, any other matters that they may be public, we'll close public comment, and I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
Zoom.
Use a drink, a second, a second, all in favor of adjourned?
Aye.
Thank you all very, very much. We will see you October. Thank you, Tim.